I call to order the April 26, 2021 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence cell phones and electronic devices. Mr. Messer, please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance, flag, United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Present.
Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mrs. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Lindy.
Here.
Mr. Messer.
Present.
Mr. Morosky.
Here.
President Jones.
Here.
Thank you. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, and your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting April 5, 2021, and the business meeting April 5, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, so we're going to start with our committee reports. And as in typical fashion, we are going to ask our committee chairs to please limit your report to five minutes. And yes, you are being timed. Ms. Bowers, please present the April 9, 2021 Student Achievement Minutes.
Thank you, President Jones. I have before me the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee Report from Friday, April 9. We had a presentation by Ms. Ayana Perisca Volos. I probably messed up her last name, please, except my apology, Ms. Ayana. She's the co-founder of Action Tank, and she presented possible workshops on local government for middle school and high school students, and also, in addition to how and when to vote and how to advocate, which is some other civic engagement programming. She shared that she was pursuing grants at this time to help pay for those things, and only thing that she needed from the district was the use of, I believe, art materials. Mr. Tralbert, our Social Studies Manager, expressed that there was a link project for students in grades four through six, and that this fell into the social studies discipline, including history, civics, economics, and geometry. Committee Member Bolton reiterated the importance of this partnership staying nonpartisan. In addition to myself, wanted to make it possible for the workshop to be piloted at other high schools, because currently, I think, the school that has agreed to pilot this project is Clark Montessori Middle School, and it was suggested that maybe we could try to make an additional collaboration with another school, preferably a Title I high school. Mr. Tralbert, as well as the co-founder, agreed that that could be looked into. We had a presentation from Ms. Campbell, Director of Curriculum on Summer Learning. In the report, it identifies when summer scholar starts and when it ends, focuses on math and reading, gain knowledge for the upcoming school year, SEL supports. In addition to, the district will be providing AP Boot Camp, an additional credit recovery, and maybe just credit courses during the summer. We also talked about the importance and priorities of summer scholars, which is in regards to parent engagement about summer scholars, recruiting a staff, and also working with principals about building their capacity and identifying what their focus would be for their school. Moving down to curriculum overview, Ms. Campbell also presented a chart overviewing curriculum that has been put into place and will be put into place through 2022, beginning in 2018. Talked some about a lot of work is being done to find new prospective ways to incorporate African-American history in K-12, and how to offer African-American history in every high school. Committee Member Bolton suggested adding the actual adoption dates to the document, which Ms. Campbell did, which should be included in your document. Other key things we talked about in this meeting was wanted heels, test adjustment. Test Administrator Justin explained that in December and January, we revisited the interest exam criteria, and it was decided that monitoring the data would continue, because there was a drop in achievement. We didn't think that was tied to actual students passing the Iowa test, but more on the students not having the chance to take the test. Administration provided a proposal for modification criteria for this year. At this particular meeting, the criteria, I believe, was a little bit different than what we agreed to for the upcoming school year. But in our report for the Cal meeting, I think this noted that we allowed administration to make the decision on that score. So this is a temporary adjustment-ish interest criteria for the 2022. In addition to, Ms. Bolton expressed concern that even the adjustment and the criteria that we received at our meeting was just not enough to identify the student consistency as it has been over the years. So the action was administration will prepare a memo, and that's what they did during our Cal meeting, providing options and recommended changes for the upcoming interest criteria, which might be noted in the Cal meeting. In addition, we talked about changing the superintendent's evaluation date, so that we can have more student learning data and test results to be used in that to measure. And as a result, Superintendent is supposed to present an evaluation timeline for review at the next committee meeting in May. I present these minutes as written.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any questions or comments about the report? Thank you. Mr. Messer, please present the April 14, 2021 Committee of the Whole Report.
Thank you, Member President Jones. Committee of the Whole met Wednesday, April 14 at 4:00 p.m. here in the Ed Center. It was the first of the Committee of the Whole, so it was actually the first one since I've joined the boards. It was a great learning opportunity in that it was a much more free conversation opportunity for the board to engage on some specific topics. Some of the highlights were specific to the board aligning on 2021, 2022 priorities and budget considerations. I'm sorry. As well as thinking beyond that with the strategic plan priorities. I don't know if I should go into, there's lots of minutia here, but I think the takeaway was it was a great format for us to actually dig into some very meaty topics specifically where we'll be investing time, energy, and money going forward. And so I present the minutes as written.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the April 15 Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee Report.
Thank you, and I'll go as quickly as I possibly can. First, we have our monthly preschool promise report. They are anticipating, you know, pre-COVID kinds of numbers. And indeed, our treasurer, also in agreement with their treasurer, talked about the agreement will include a 3% increase regarding funding. We had an important report, too, about E-rate and what E-rate actually means, and how many millions or whatever dollars we might be getting back anywhere, somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million or so. But it doesn't come right away, but it also will perhaps impact what we're able to do in the new CPS, technologically at least. We also had a report from our own preschool folks, and because one of the titles in our committee title is growth, we have sort of a recommendation coming out of both the administration and also this committee about growth in preschool, and where we need that growth to be, and that is on the east side, particularly in particular neighborhoods like Mount Lookout, Madisonville, Hyde Park, Oakley. And that would be part of our first effort in going through the growth plan. And we have the statistic to show you, and the charts, I think, are very illuminating from that standpoint. We also, as you see those charts I'm mentioning, there's also a map that is indicating where the preschool sites are. And we also had a discussion, and it's something that Mr. Messer's been good about making sure we follow, and that is the COVID impact and COVID funds and the federal dollars that we might be anticipating, and how they are actually, as our treasurer has pointed out, up and down and changing, and it's almost on a daily basis as to what we can perhaps try to assume, and that's important as we go forward with new CPS and also with our own budget. The treasurer also showed a timeline for the budget development, as well as the first stab at a new treasurer's goal coming up, and that will be for part of discussion for us as a committee. And we also talked in terms of, we have, on behalf of the Policy Committee, have asked the treasurer to go through some of the 6,000 series, which is our policies, that are financial policies, so that we can report back to Policy Committee, separating philosophy from actual work, and we'll be able to report that to the chair and the committee this week. And then we had, again, another extensive, very important, very costly, and very safety and financially significant dialogue about transportation. It's all written out, even in much of the dialogue, some major things. Committee felt okay about going forward with fuel contracts and letting those, bidding those out. There was some sense that Metro, at least, we would know the numbers of kids in the high school, and we did make it clear that we would want our two high schools that are currently being served by Yellow Bus. We've been reassured by the administration that they will be served by Metro. But even as this late date in the school year, the state has not yet determined whether or not our seventh and eighth graders can be on Metro. The state has also decided that the Hamilton County Educational Service Center will be part of an arbitrage, will help, I shouldn't say that, will help negotiate and organize what it is as we relate to the charters and the privates and the parochials with whom we must deal. But we're waiting for final legislation on that. The committee did express concerns about extending the current contracts regarding vans and Yellow Bus until, as Ms. Bates mentioned, until certain things are adjusted and dealt with that we have great concerns about, and also not necessarily wanting to extend for the one year, but also not wanting to necessarily issue an RFP, which is huge in all of those areas, until we knew a little bit more. But we would want to extend, perhaps, if the administration were able to review the transportation contracts that we currently have with our Yellow Bus and van folks. We then had a great presentation regarding our monthly financial information, and it's outlined there for you as well. We have one CRA, and only one, but this is on the new cycle, our new agreement, and I think it's among the first that we've had on the new one. I also would like to draw attention to another chart that's been really interesting for us and to follow, since it's not just about general fund, but it's also about the funding from grants. And then the final discussion that we had regarding other business was something that the treasurer raised about having our Committee of the Whole and perhaps less time or less business, that it might slow us down financially regarding reimbursement and contracts. So it's a dialogue we started to have, and the issue was what size contract actually would have to come before the board. But that's just the initial conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Lindy?
Sorry, this is less about finance and more about a note from the Student Achievement Committee I wanted to get in before we voted to approve the minutes.
About what?
About the Student Achievement Committee.
Oh, okay.
Is now an okay time to do that?
That's fine.
Great. I just wanted to add one other topic that came up around the summer school program that was discussed. I'm really excited about the federal funds that are available to make summer school open, as I understand it, to any CPS student who wants to come. I think that's fantastic. One part of the conversation we had that felt important to me was getting some clarity on who we're targeting, which is the group of students that we most want to attend summer school. Who specifically are those students? How are we defining that set? How big is that group? And then how are we doing against that target as we're working on enrollment? And I just thought that was a very good discussion and an important part of the meeting that I wanted to add as part of the update.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, Madam President, Mr. Lindy's comment about summer schools jogged my memory. I did not cite one of the more important things within the minutes, and that is for our summer schools, summer scholars, and waiving of the tuition is an issue that Mr. Messer and Ms. Bates has raised, and that will be the case, because we will be having CARES money for that. And Ms. Vera Brooks raised the issue that summer scholars would be, students that are currently enrolled, would be certainly eligible for that. She made the case that there are still days that that could happen.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. Board Member Bolton jarred my memory on a key focus, and I was so focused on my five minutes. There was an action item from Board Member Morosky for clarity on when he made the suggestion and assignment to the SAC committee about, I'm sorry, yeah, SAC committee about waiving student fees for the fall. We weren't clear, we were talking about student fees or fees for pay to play. We weren't clear on what fees you were asking us to consider and discuss.
Yeah, I think any fees that parents would be on the hook for, so like, obviously, sports, some respects, or just different fees to participate in programs, things like that. So any fees that parents would be on the hook for, for the school year.
Any fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
President, to that point, in that SAC meeting, under the leadership of Chair Bowers, I think the superintendent in that meeting determined to waive fees.
Okay, now I'm really confused. I remember the, I remember the request, as I understand it, and we may need to clarify it in the minutes, but I thought the request was to waive unpaid fees from this year. I don't recall if we said for next year, unless I'm mistaken, right?
Board Member Morosky clarified, that's what.
No, no, I think, I think we're good. I appreciate that, Superintendent, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and my understanding is that there's agreement to waive the fees for this year, for this school year, all fees for students.
Okay, thank you. All righty, I need a motion to approve the committee reports.
Don't move.
Is there a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we have two presentations this evening. Superintendent, please introduce our first presentation.
Yes, and I would like to reverse the order of the presentation, if that's okay, presentation. So I'd like to have Sarah Trumbull Oliver come forward with the health and safety update, and I believe that we have at least two guests will be joining us via the video stream.
Good evening. So tonight, we will start with our usual school and community COVID data. For our school measures, we have 74 in-school transmissions, and that is out of the 1,355 total positive cases, of which 749 are student positive cases and 606 are staff positive cases. Last week, we were at 96.7% implementation of safety protocols, with three current classes currently on distance learning. Our staff attendance has dipped a bit, 90% for certificated, and 86% for civil service, and our HR Director, Mr. McDowell, is keeping a very close eye on the staff attendance. For our Hamilton County Public Schools, the week prior to April 22, there were 23 new student cases and one new staff case. For the city of Cincinnati, our daily new cases per 100,000 as of today is 14.9. And so you can see that long, relatively flat seven-day average per 100,000 there at the end. It did inch up just a bit over the past two weeks, but overall, very flat in the city of Cincinnati. Our 14-day trend shows that five of the last 14 days were decreasing. And our positivity rate has not changed, it is still 3.5% for the city. And we are still under two days for the average length to receive positive test results. Now, you may remember the COVID Measures to Inform School Planning Report, which is a report authored by our regional health partners, the ones that you see listed at the top of the slide here. And here to explain some recent changes, I hear is Dr. Robert Kahn, who's joining us virtually from Children's Hospital.
Hi, thank you. Again, my name's Robert Kahn. I oversee community population health at Children's Hospital. And as Mr. Bill Oliver suggested, this is from an online document. You can find it on the website of the Hamilton County Public Health or the Cincinnati Health Department, a set of guidelines for assessing key measures to inform school planning, and endorsed by the list, as she said there. So while the science continues to evolve, the essence of our directive remains pretty steady. So that is, while it's useful to track what is happening in the community, we believe that the incidence and transmission of COVID within the school system remains the leading consideration. It's not the only consideration, but it's the leading consideration. So two buckets, that is cases and absences. So for cases, carefully monitoring the count and rate of school-related cases with a focus on in-school transmission, and then in terms of absences, keeping a close account of staff illness, whether that's for isolation, quarantining, or their own caretaking. There's a series of questions we offer to consider in relative priority. So is there evidence of in-school transmission? And so you go on down the list with, if you're getting red answers, those weight you in a certain direction, but ultimately, the balancing of the answers to those questions is critical for the school board to consider with consultation from public health and other experts. So again, while the evidence from CDC and others and the guidelines have evolved over the last two to three months, the core considerations about what is happening within the school remain the priority. And with that, I'll turn it back.
So what was, what is important about what Dr. Kahn was presenting is that the most recent updates from our regional health providers are still recommending that we use school measures as a leading consideration as opposed to community measures. So in response to an assignment from Mr. Morosky to propose new criteria to make decisions about in-person learning or blended learning or distance learning, we offer these three criteria that you see at the top of the screen. Is there continuing or significant in-school transmission? Two, is there enough staff to operate effectively and safely? And three, are we adhering to the safety protocols with high reliability? And so at this time, we don't propose that a community measure be the single deciding factor for the whole entire district. We still want to be aware of the level of COVID spread in our community, but as Dr. Kahn mentioned, our health advisors believe that the incidence and transmission and what's happening in schools should be the leading consideration. And so you'll notice with these three criteria, the arrow is demonstrating that these answers are really a continuum, and so there is no hard and fast numerical cutoff. These decisions would be made, as they are being made now, on a case-by-case basis, depending on the classroom situation or the school situation. And we will continue to be transparent about these criteria and provide the numbers in our health and safety report, as well as posting on our website. Now, you may be wondering, when would we ever consider moving back to blended or distance learning for the whole district, if ever? And it would be, yes, if any of those three criteria become a concern across a multitude of schools. And lastly, I will turn it over to Dr. Min from the Cincinnati Health Department with a quick update on student quarantines.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Maurice Min, Assistant Health Commissioner with the Cincinnati Health Department. So I just wanted to highlight what we have been, what has been done with the student quarantine and the slight change that we've had. So since students have returned back to school in person as of March 30, we monitored the progress of the student cases during that time, and CDC and ODH have said that students, or anyone, actually, if there's updates in quarantine guidelines. So in that, you can, if you remain asymptomatic for a period of 10 days as a closed contact, you can, you can return back to, released from quarantine, but you are still to monitor your symptoms for that 14-day period. So this is the same process that had been followed for the CPS staff, and we've just implemented that for the, for the students as well.
And that does conclude the health and safety presentation.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Morosky?
Just comment and a question. Thank you, Ms. Trumbull Oliver. That is excellent, Superintendent, everyone that put together that criteria. I think that makes sense, particularly based on all of the new evidence from our local experts and the more, you know, the countrywide sort of experts. So thank you for doing that. And then I was just curious, so based on that nice neat graphic, also, I would love if we could get that presentation. I said, don't think we got it beforehand, which is fine. But then going forward with that nice neat graphic, if we could see, like, so the numbers we saw today, and we always get like that point-in-time number, which I love, as you know, like, we get the, like, the data we got today, and then at our next board meeting, you know, I don't know, I'm not good at making graphics, but like a comparative, so we know that where we are in that continuum with the arrows going left or right, then we can just see it, and it's kind of an easy sort of boom, there it is, we're the same or less, and that's great, there's no need to even think about it. If that makes, does that make sense?
Yes, I can work on that visual.
I appreciate it. That graphic was great, makes sense. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you. Superintendent, next presentation.
Yes, I would now like to ask Assistant Superintendent Shawna Murphy to come forward with her team. So this morning, we had an opportunity to participate in a Facebook Live celebration for My Tomorrow, students celebrating them, and it was really, really awesome, very exciting. So hopefully, that's a part of their presentation this afternoon or evening.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So the Office of Innovation and Strategic Partnerships is super excited to give you an update on what's happening with college and career. And joining me today, we have Javon Calhoun, who is our college specialist, Brittany Cousins, our career-based learning manager, and Mike Turner, our career and technical education manager. Maybe the next two slides, if you don't mind. Our work is centered pretty much around student-centered decision-making. However, this group also works very deeply with our community partners, and so you'll hear a word about that, and the growth of the programming that we have to offer our young people. Next slide, please. So while we primarily work with students in grades seven through 12, we have a deep passion around post-12th grade, making sure our young people are ready post-graduation, that they have their three Es declared, and they're accepted in those areas, and they're able to take care of themselves and have a great life after they leave Cincinnati Public Schools. So tonight, our key messages are around our strong partnerships that we have assisting us in doing this work, the level of student engagement in the college and career space, and then all of the opportunities we have to make sure the young people have this pathway in order. But this time, I'm going to ask Javon Calhoun, again, a college specialist, if he would come forward.
Thank you. So we'll start off talking a little bit about the two pipeline programs that we serve. So one is the Early IT Program, so that's currently engaging 110 students across Clark Montessori, Hughes-Stell, and Schroeder High School. And then the other pipeline program that we'll highlight is the Miami University Transformative Educators Advancing Change. And then the other pipeline program that we'll highlight is the Miami University Transformative Educators Advancing Change. We call it MUTech for short, and they're currently engaging 22 sophomores, excuse me, 22 sophomores and juniors at Aiken High School. Next slide, please. So with the UC Early IT Program, a couple of highlights. We have a total of 14 students who have confirmed to attend the University of Cincinnati, 11 of whom will enter directly into the School of Information Technology due to their engagement with the program. There were internship opportunities in the summer of 2020 with both Kroger and Procter &amp; Gamble, and those went so well that Procter &amp; Gamble actually reached out to extend an opportunity for students to engage in a winter internship. So we had seven students at Hughes that engaged in that. And then we have three seniors who have taken a PD-1010 course in the Early IT Program, and that will allow them to co-op this summer after graduating, before they even set foot on campus as UC students. So definitely excited about that. And then we also have 18 juniors that have already signed up for that PD-1010 course in the fall, and that will allow them that opportunity as long as they complete that next year. Next slide. So when we're looking at College Credit Plus, there's a couple of things. So nationally, schools that offer CCP courses see a 15% increase in college enrollment. And then some of the other advantages are graduation sales and improved state report cards in buildings that offer College Credit Plus. And then you'll also see kind of like the graphic there that indicates that even with the challenges of COVID, our students have proven that they can persist. So you see there's that 6% difference between obtaining credits in 1920 versus what we saw in a fall semester of this year. So our students are showing that they are up to the challenge of completing college level, excuse me, college-level work even during COVID. Next slide. So with regards to strategy, the two things that we examined were the district demographics versus the CCP participation demographics. And when you look there, in particular with regards to ethnicity and socioeconomic status is where you'll see the gaps are largest, particularly when we're looking at ethnicity for black males and then students who are held from economically disadvantaged households, you'll see that's where those gaps are located. And so that kind of led to, next slide, the strategy to deputize teachers. So when you're looking at, at kind of like the engagement in 1920, what we saw was that those targeted populations, so that's males, students of color, and students from economically disadvantaged households, they were actually more likely to engage in College Credit Plus programs when those courses were offered in their building. And so, sorry, next slide. And so with that, some of the accomplishments with regards to that, we see that this year we have 32 courses that are offered in buildings, so embedded. And then next year, we will definitely have an additional nine courses. And then that ensuing year, there's that big jump with 17 additional courses added. So really what we're, we're really excited with what we're poised to do as far as like expansion and engagement with regards to College Credit Plus over the next couple of years. Next slide, please. And this being a couple of bright spots. So there's an exciting opportunity between Whitrow University School of Business and the University of Cincinnati's College, excuse me, Fisher College of Business, where they're going to come in, they're going to be engaging students, hopefully, kind of creating a sort of a pipeline. There will be some additional College Credit Plus courses added, as well as some wraparound services, including summer engagement opportunities to make sure that students are ready to enter the Fisher, Fisher College of Business. So, so that's one great thing there. And then also with regards to some of the expansion opportunities, Gamble has a new partnership with Clark State where they'll be offering some courses CCP next year. And then both Euler and Riverview are working to get additional instructors' credentials so that they can then offer courses CCP the ensuing year. And then last on that is that there are 23 instructors who are currently receiving financial support from the expanding opportunities for each child grant. And so that's, this is the first year of that grant, and so we're looking to expand that even more next year and continue to get more instructors' support in getting that extra credentialing for College Credit Plus. Next slide. And then the last thing that I wanted to highlight is 3E data. And so we're currently just under 80% response rate for expected graduates. And then there's targeted efforts being made by, by the entire team across the board here at the district level, as well as in buildings, to get more students to engage and complete that, particularly those students who have yet to respond to that a year to date, so that we can, A, have an idea of where students are going, then B, utilize that information to make sure that we're allocating appropriate resources where needed. And then when you're looking at the, the numbers there, you'll see that we have 14% of students are currently looking, identifying as employment as their pathway, and 9% are still undecided. So that's typically where we are. And then you'll see that the largest population of students identify for enrollment in blend in some shape or form. So highlighting that we have that enroll-employ, that it's about 15%. With a lot of the students' experience this year during COVID, more of them have been working. So that is probably due to them being more cognizant of the fact that they will need to work as they start their college career. And so that's top of mind as to taking that survey and talking about their future plan. So that is all that I have right now as far as updates for our college team. And so now I will transition to Ms. Brittany to talk a little bit about career-based learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Javon, and good evening, everyone. Although COVID may have changed the way we provide our students with career exposure and career readiness opportunities, it has given us a unique space to try some new strategies to engage our students in new ways. So whether it was assisting our students with virtual work assignments and their employment pipelines, or doing Facebook Live sessions with our Beyond the Tassel experiences, we have been able to keep the work alive and well. Many of our experiences have expanded and really grown throughout the years, and we've been able to do this with the help of our business community, specifically our Business Advisory Council. And we are super proud of the recognition that we have received from the Ohio Department of Education. We were one of two districts to be awarded the top honor of being a four-star Business Advisory Council, which basically says that we have shared the, the spirit and exuberance that ODE was looking for when they created this experience for our districts across Ohio. We were also selected as the only district to be awarded Excellence in Coordinating Career Development Experience. This is truly a testament to show that true partnership coupled with passion really leads to direct impact for our students. So we are super excited and super, super grateful, excuse me, to our school teams, our students, and especially the members of our Business Advisory. Next slide, please. So I wanted to take a moment to highlight two of our employment pipeline experiences that we were able to continue throughout the pandemic. So thanks to the board, our senior leaders, and our partners, we really buckled down to figure out how to still provide these opportunities for our students and keep them safe and healthy. So the first one I want to highlight is actually our partnership with TriHealth. TriHealth currently is partnering with us for two cohorts of students, both from Hughes Stelm High School, one junior class and one senior class, who are working two to four days a week at Good Samaritan Hospital and rotating in different departments such as food and nutrition, pharmacy, diagnostic imaging, as well as sterile processing. Students in this experience actually began their school year in the summer with a virtual work experience and then transitioned in person to work 10 to 15 hours a week while doing their high school coursework as well. We are getting ready to reach our big milestone with this group in graduating our first cohort of seniors. They have completed two years of this experience, and they will be going on to graduate, complete the experience, and go on to work at TriHealth. We are extremely excited and proud of these students and grateful for the partnership with TriHealth. Next slide, please. So our first pipeline district-wide was actually with DHL in partnership with the Supply Chain OKI Group, and we are excited to continue this work as well. Particularly with the supply chain logistics work and healthcare, these are two industries that rose to the top of the essential careers list during COVID, and our students were able and provided with an opportunity to see the importance of this firsthand. Our students from Dater High School took on training through our partnership with Cincinnati State's Workforce Development Center and virtually completed both their Certified Logistics Analyst and Certified Logistics Technician certifications virtually. They also have had the highest passing rate for both of these credentialing exams, and DHL has noted that this class has been the most engaged cohort to date. And we are extremely excited to report that those students are now working at DHL on the weekends and will continue to pursue their post-secondary pursuits after graduation. We have successfully been able to transition over 50 students in the course of the last three years through this experience and give them a jumpstart into their career. Next slide, please. As we are looking forward to our growth and expansion plans, we have a couple of things on the horizon. We will be growing the supply chain work by adding an additional employer and expanding the work-based learning as well as employment opportunities to multiple high schools. Through our cybersecurity partnership with Belkin, we will continue the work at TAVT, but also be able to provide an opportunity for students at Walnut Hills High School. In addition, in our manufacturing employment program, we will continue our work with Aiken, as well as resume our work with Woodward Career Tech. Our TriHealth partnership will expand to Riverview East, and our culinary work will resume at Dater as the industry rebounds from the impact of COVID. Information technology will also take center stage through our partnership with Interalliance and a unique opportunity that I'll share just a little bit later. Next slide, please. We are super excited also to bring back our engagement opportunities. So students will have an opportunity to participate in some of our signature experiences, such as our Career Expo, as well as job shadowing and a virtual speaker series that we've called How I Got Here, as well as explore life skills in our Life Ready curriculum. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. Just like we want our students to exhibit certain characteristics in the workplace, we will continue to exhibit some attributes we want our students to embody. Collaboration and teamwork is essential to bring these experiences to life, and our work with the local business community, as well as my college and career colleagues, helps students not only pick their career, but also really figure out what it takes to get there. So another thing that we are really seeing is we're becoming a model for other districts. And we have recently been awarded and selected as a pilot site by Ohio Department of Education, as well as the Governor's Office of Workforce Transformation. We will be serving as a pilot site for the new IT internship program, where we will be able to provide our students with summer IT internships, as well as provide our opportunity for our employer partners to receive reimbursement for student wage. So we are excited to continue this work, and I will turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Michael Turner.
Thank you, Brittany, and thank you, everyone, for allowing us to come here tonight. There are many accomplishments in Career Tech that we're very proud of, but just a few to highlight tonight. One of those is that in connection with the strategic plan, we not only met, but exceeded both of the goals that were connected to credentialing opportunities for students. So we're extremely proud of that. Also, everything with Career Tech operates under the Perkins legislation. We're now on Perkins Five since this started some decades ago. And so we're very happy to say that our four-year plan that we worked on last year was accepted with no revisions. We're very pleased with that, and it's really a testament of the work that not only occurs at the district level, but also the teachers for Career Tech are not only instructors for what they do with career and technical education, but they also must do a lot of compliance-related work that we have to account for because of this federal overseeing of this program. And so we're very, very pleased with all of the layers that they meander through with this. So that's a huge accomplishment. Another one is the firefighter and emergency medical services pathway at Western Hills University High School. That has been restructured, and now we're actually expanding into year two with expanding the classes that the students have there. And so we're very excited about that. Next slide, please. To piggyback on what Brittany reported about the IT internship, we're always looking for opportunities to highlight what our students do and also employ our students. And so a very unique collaboration between the Urban League, serving as the lead partner agency along with the Community Action Agency, Easter Seals, and CPS is underway. This will allow students in Career Tech who choose employment as their pathway upon graduation, they will have an opportunity to work during the summer. They will also be able to gain more industry-recognized credentials, and they will have subsidized wages for the employers for that upskill training. This is brand-new, just got notified of the award very recently, and so details are being released about that. And so we're so excited with that. Next slide, please. Career Tech is growing. So just this year, we added a media arts pathway at Euler. We added two new, I'm sorry, three new pathways at Aiken New Tech. We have Agribusiness, which now means that we have agriculturally-based Career Tech pathways in four of our 16 high schools. We added two education pathways, early childhood education and teaching professions. And so this year, they're all in foundations courses, but moving into next year, students will start choosing which track will they move into, or which pathway, will it be the early childhood education pathway or the teaching professions pathway? So we're extremely excited about that. Next slide, please. But we still have three high schools to go, and I'm really proud to say that even faced with the pandemic and, and everything that's been related with that, we are on track to enter into agreements with those schools next year and be able to apply with the Department of Education so that, so that those schools can be on board in the 2022, 2023 school year. Really, when we look at expansion efforts, the first and foremost factor is student interest. Students must be interested in, in what pathway is added. It can't be what adults want added. It's got to be what matches student interest. But the second thing that we have to look at is can the school facility support the student interest area? So we've already entered into these conversations with Schroder, Spencer, and Walnut. We utilized Naviance, which is our college and career planning tool. We utilize that for surveys so that they could get data from students to be able to know what areas and what trends do they see with their students. And we've also started looking, based on a board assignment, is how can we have Career Tech pathway sharing across schools? And so we're working on that assignment for you as well. Next slide, please. One of the other accomplishments to mention has to do with pre-apprenticeships, which really connect very directly to graduation. So you may ask, what is a pre-apprenticeship? You're going to hear this coming up more and more. Pre-apprenticeship is simply just a program that teaches basic technical skills, but also job readiness to prepare students to enter a registered apprenticeship program upon graduation. Pre-apprenticeship looks different, even in the same school district, across pathways, and it can look different from school district to school district. Next slide, please. There's classroom training with pre-apprenticeships. There also can be hands-on labs related to an apprenticeship occupation. It can also include paid work experience. Brittany mentioned TriHealth, great employer, employee pipeline. That is a, even though it's an internship, it's also a pre, an approved pre-apprenticeship for health for those students who participate. And so that is one example of a crossover that is a pre-apprenticeship. Next slide, please. The best pre-apprenticeship programs really have that ongoing, close collaboration between schools, a registered apprenticeship company or a sponsor. In fact, to get approved, you have to have a sponsor. And what many of these apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship programs do is allow students to earn credit towards completion requirements for a registered apprenticeship program. So when they leave high school, they can move into an apprenticeship program, keep learning, but also get paid in the area in which they're interested. Next slide, please. So in our district, we have a goal that we want to have pre-apprenticeships that are approved in each Career Tech pathway. Right now, we have approved pre-apprenticeships in engineering, health, and construction, and we're actively working on other ones across the other pathways. Next slide, please. So here's a great side effect of pre-apprenticeships. First and foremost, it's all about the student. It gives them something to build a resume. It gives them something to move into the future. But pre-apprenticeships have a big graduation payoff. Next slide, please. If a student does not pass the end-of-course AER test, they have to find other options or other alternate pathways, as they're referred to many times, in order to graduate. And so for Career Tech, pre-apprenticeships, there's a lot of power. Next slide, please. So if students don't get the test scores they need, they have to fulfill an option, another option. And so we have an option highlighted here. And on the next slide, please, you'll see a blow-up of this. Option one is demonstrating two career-focused activities. One, at least one has to be foundational. It could be one foundation, one supporting, or it could be two foundational. Every single one of those can be addressed in Career Tech classrooms. However, if a student is in an approved pre-apprenticeship program, they automatically, upon completion, satisfy a 12-point industry credential and a pre-apprenticeship or program. And so there is a lot of power in that because once they do that, they have met option one. And so the next slide shows us that the additional things that they need to do is get two graduation seals. Well, a pre-apprenticeship gives you the industry-recognized credential seal, which means if you're part of a pre-apprenticeship program and you successfully complete it, then you get three things that can really catapult you towards graduation. So we're working really, really hard to help our students navigate through that system. So we're excited about that. Next slide, please. So there's a lot of work to do out in the schools with the graduation. Things that we just looked at and with all of these opportunities for work-based learning, we are excited and hopeful that what we have proposed for the upcoming school year of seven schools getting career specialists, we are really, really happy to be able to propose that because we know now more than ever in the landscape in which we operate that this is so important. Those career specialists would assist with very drilled-down, school-based activities to connect what they're learning in the classroom to real-world experience. The other thing that is really new is all of the work-based learning requirements that we see that students can use to graduate somehow have to be kept track of. ODE has instituted this new method where we have to keep track of it for Career Tech purposes, but also students can use that to graduate without being in a Career Tech program. And so we're figuring out, how do we keep track of all of that? And those career specialists will be key to doing that. Next slide, please. So finally, the My Tomorrow Senior Showcase. You know, this morning, as Superintendent Mitchell said, was phenomenal. Kyle Linsky, Local 12 news anchor, was the emcee for this event. It was on Facebook Live. The students came, they were so excited. We had 14 students from seven departments, from the Office of Innovation and Strategic Partnerships, recognized first-ever My Tomorrow Senior Showcase. It was a great collaborative effort across the departments, represented which were Aspire, Athletics, Career Tech, Career-Based Learning, College Community Learning Centers, and Project Connect. The 6:00 PM newscast tonight for Local 12 ended with a picture taken on the stage today with news anchor Kyle Linsky and all the students who were recognized. He was so impressed with how our students represented today. So what we wanted to do was close this out tonight with a video of a young lady who, just in a very eloquent way, talks about the impact that My Tomorrow has made for her. Thank you. Do you can play the video?
My name is Lexi Redden. I attend Woodward Career Technical High School. I'm in the 12th grade, and I am in the biomedical career tech. After I graduated high school, I plan on attending Northern Kentucky University and majoring in radiology. Well, I've been a girl to woman since I was in the 10th grade, and that was like my first year at Woodward. And being a girl to woman, it just like taught me more about myself and allowed me to be more confident and open up more to people. I was being, I was procrastinating on filling out the scholarship. So if it weren't for Ms. Gay or like my coach, Ms. Akbar, or my uncle, or even my other coach, Coach Mack, I probably wouldn't have got that scholarship because like they were just on me to like do it. And I got it done last minute. And I want to thank my mom too, and my friends, because they encouraged me.
A pre-K through 12 is about what happens to our young people once they graduate. I know this is a lengthy presentation, but it was so important for you all to see your hard work, how it bears fruit for our young people. They are truly impressive, and the experience that they are getting at CPS is unmatched. We are providing for them what many other school districts have not provided for their young people. And I think that CPS should be very proud of our young people and what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Open the floor for questions or comments. Mr. Messer, followed by Ms. Bowers.
I just want to say thank you. It's been fun being on the board for the past few years, watching the iteration. And I think about the old adage, Rome wasn't built in a day. But then there's all that little caveat, but they worked hard at it every single day. And I see that in this team, like the opportunities, everything just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger and touching more of our kids. And ultimately, it'll touch their families too. So just kudos on what has been a transformative iteration of this, you know, idea since I've been on the board and just think what you presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I am in awe about all of this information. I love all of this information, especially when we identify that we are a pilot for the governor, through the governor, the workforce transformation apart. And I can't reiterate this enough. I say this every time that we are in the diamond in a rough area. And this information is so great that we have got to push it out into the community more about career technology focus because we're doing amazing things. And just to hear that we only have three schools left to identify, oh, my goodness. Great work, team. This is awesome. It kind of feeds into my report later on because I have something else for you. But I'll talk more about that at SAC. But I really appreciate all of this. And can I get a copy of the presentations?
I'm sorry.
Can we get a copy of the presentations?
Yes, absolutely. But I just wanted to tell you that Lieutenant Governor Hughes-Deb will be here May 6th, third, to talk with us about this IT pilot.
Great. Other comments? Mr. Lindy, followed by Ms. Bolton.
Thanks, President Jones. I just wanted to share my gratitude and positive feedback as well. There was a lot in the presentation. I won't try to share everything that was great about it, but a couple of specific things. I thought the equity analysis on racial gaps and ideas for what can improve that in the first part of the presentation was very compelling. To Brittany and her team, it was great to see the four stars. I sat in on some of those meetings. It was very exciting to see that. And just that there were clear outcomes on the strategic plan and that we exceeded them. I thought that was great. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. I think the team knows how I feel about this effort that you've all made. It's great. Just want to consider continuing to think about what dual enrollment internally can mean and distance learning can mean as we expand these opportunities. I mean, there's so many things we can do now, I mean, that we've learned from and appreciate that. Also, I'm very supportive of the career specialist efforts. Of course, I'd call it career placement specialist because that's sort of what's going to ultimately happen. But great idea. Could you just help me understand the difference between an employment pipeline and a career path? Because I know we have multiple career paths. But yeah, if you could do that, I think that would be helpful.
So I'll start with a career path. And so the way that Career Tech is set up, I mean, the Ohio Department of Education has very clear clusters for employment, career clusters, but they also have individual, what they deem pathways within that. And so like business, for example, has one big pathway. It's business. But in IT, there's five different pathways, very specific, you know, networking, cybersecurity, interactive media, so on and so forth. And so one of the things that we see ODE starting to do now is, I think, it's almost like, is it the cart driving the horse or the horse driving the cart? Because they just announced that they're adding some new Career Tech pathways in a couple of years. And one of those just happens to be logistics. Well, in our district, we've not been able to have a Career Tech pathway for logistics, even though there's a pipeline program for logistics. Because of the structure of Career Tech that we have to work with, that's not been a pathway. So what we try to do is take what ODE considers a pathway and then mesh it with a pipeline. I'll let Brittany address the pipeline issue, but logistics is a great example. Where we've not been able to have a Career Tech pathway to meet the pipeline. Until two years from now, we'll be able to do that since ODE just announced that this week.
Great. Thank you. And the employment pipelines are direct entry points into a career path. So we have been able to strategically partner with companies within our area to give students an opportunity to start their work experience before they exit high school and have a direct path to full-time or part-time employment once they graduate. So it is a direct step into their career path. And we are trying to book in a lot of our Career Tech pathways so students can spend those two years working through the curriculum and then have tangible ways to practice what they're learning in the classroom. And then our companies are on board to actually hire them, not short-term, but after graduation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I will add, did anybody else have anything else? I'll just. Go ahead.
I just have an inquiry for you, Mr. Gentlemen. You had made a comment regarding our students in CCP and College Credit Plus courses. And it was with regards to African-American males being more, higher percentage with taking courses in the school building. Do we know how many are currently enrolled as this is optioning time or should have been within the last few weeks are enrolled in College Credit Plus courses? And do we know how they're doing with passing College Credit Plus courses?
So we're in the process of collecting all that information as we kind of like do our end-of-year wrap with that. But that is one of the things that specifically have the CCP team. So there's a CCP specialist as well that we're keeping an eye on because that was one of our targets and one of the strongest arguments for us having such a focus on bringing these courses in buildings is because, again, we want to close that equity gap and that being one of the biggest areas. So as we kind of wrap up with the end-of-year reporting, we will have that. And I can definitely make sure that I share that and get that out.
Do we know how many are actually passing our College Credit Plus courses in general?
Just the males or just students in? Again, I can pull that information. It is available. I didn't bring it into this meeting, but I can definitely do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll close it out. And first, I want to congratulate the team on all the recognition that you're getting statewide. I have to agree with Board Member Messer that I have seen the transformation in my tenure. Here is the board, here at the board, and am very proud to hear everything that such a wonderful group of people have worked toward. And it truly is transformation. And I say that because in reading the literature, the research is now saying that career and technical jobs are going to be available. So we have a head start. And I'm very proud of the fact that our kids are on the cutting edge of this transformation. And you know, most of my life, the goal was college. You get your college degree. And that's fine. But these kids, some of them are going into college with having a skill set already that they just can master and move on. And some of them are going to do excellently in their career and their technical jobs because of the pipeline and the career path. So I'm very appreciative of that. And I heard Ms. Bolton, under her breath, say swoop. And I'm going to say, go Big Red. And congratulations to all the schools. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on. We're at the item on our agenda for hearing the public, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening this video conference to include opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, your contact information, if you want a direct response to your question. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Again, each speaker will have two minutes and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you, and I believe we have 15 speakers.
Thing is Evan Holt, followed by Mike Evans, followed by Owen Durico. Go ahead, Mr. Holt.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. For those who don't, my name is Evan Holt. I am a candidate for Cincinnati City Council, but I come to you today as a student and product of Cincinnati Puppet Schools. Round the bat, I want to commend you all for all the great job you've been doing in terms of educating our students and keeping them safe. I stood in solidarity with you all as you were on the receiving end of unfair attacks over the last year or so. But today, I'm in solidarity with the Young Activists Coalition and their calls to remove student resource managers from CPS schools. I'm glad I see kind of participated in the meeting earlier because hearing some of the verbiage that was used was kind of disconcerting, to say the least. Some of you invoke street-level violence as a justification for having SRO officers, seemingly obscuring the fact that SOR officers have very little influence on street-level violence. Yes, street-level violence is a huge problem, but having more armed officers in schools disproportionately targeting non-white students doesn't mean to actually address the factors that lead to street-level violence. Furthermore, a student having a positive relationship with one SOR- a student having a positive relationship with one SOR officer will not change how they will be targeted by another officer when they're on the street. Social workers are far more competent at resolving any potential issues or conflict that a student may have versus a police officer because they have to do so without the threat of violence. Beyond that, there's very little qualification that separates an officer from a social worker except for a social worker is specifically trained to help as their primary function of their job, whereas the job of a police officer is just to enforce the law. Social workers are already extensively more trained as it pertains to being trauma-informed and with general de-escalation skills. My mother was a jobs and family services caseworker for five years, and she was putting herself into potentially dangerous situations every day, but the only thing she had to protect herself being a manila phone. This extensive training cannot be simply replicated for a police officer in a single semester. But admittedly, I have having SOR, or, sorry, having officers has reduced the exact same inequitable outcomes for black people as we see in the criminal justice system at large. According to Local 12, black students at CPS are five times more likely to face discipline than their white peers. Black students make up 63% of CPS.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Evans, followed by Owen Durico, followed by Molly Gray. Go ahead, Mr. Evans. Go ahead, sir.
Can you please unmute? Please un-
Mr. Evans, your sound is not coming through. We're going to come back to you. Owen Durico is our next speaker, followed by Molly Gray, followed by Yusuf Manir. Mr. Evans, we'll come back to you after this.
Hello, Board. But more importantly, hello to the community, the parents, students, teachers, employees, and concerned citizens. Everyone who's watching this and whose lives and, in many cases, livelihoods have been entrusted to this Board. My name is Owen Durico. I'm speaking on behalf and am the Vice President of the Young Activists Coalition. Unsurprisingly, you weren't told this by the Board itself today on this main meeting, but today, our organization-
Mr. Durico, you will address your comments to the Board. Please do so.
Okay. Today, our organization, with support from CPS and Cincinnati communities, protested the presence of the Cincinnati Police Department within CPS in front of the very building that this Board is sitting in today. We were protesting the fact that the presence of police in our schools appears to be more important to this Board than providing mental health resources and psychologists to its students. We were protesting the fact that the ways justice is carried out in this district are wildly disproportionate. We were protesting the fact that this Board continues to refuse to take meaningful action in the face of two students being arrested in this district every day. In fact, in fact, we were there as the majority of the Board arrived today, but yet, many of them chose not to even talk to us as if students advocating for themselves was a nuisance to be avoided rather than a pressing issue to be addressed. And I think that this is very telling. We shouldn't have to do this. You should already be doing everything you can to solve the daily criminalization of students. And yet, we, the students, have to prevent you from entering a building to even get you to mention us at a Board meeting. You always have to come, you always have comment after comment when you're being complimented or patting yourselves on the back after doing your jobs. But when your conduct is challenged, you remain silent. That's not what being a public servant is. You don't get to ignore the bits that make you uncomfortable. And with regards to that, it's been implied that we weren't being respectful enough to you because you were being inconvenienced? You are elected officials. You are beholden to this community. We were there precisely to be an inconvenience because it has become evident that many here struggle to bring themselves to care if they aren't being bothered. Who do you think you represent if not this whole community?
Here, followed by Mike Evans. Go ahead, Ms. Gray.
You hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Molly Gray. I'm a CPS parent and my two daughters attend Walnut Hills High School. One of them is continuing her remote learning and the other one has gone back in person. And my in-person student has been quarantined, was safe, and has already returned to school very happily. The protocols you have in place are important. They may not be convenient, but they're keeping our kids safe. And I want to thank you for your constant flexibility when it comes to the pandemic. I'm grateful that you have allowed athletes to practice their sports and have allowed them to enjoy responsible live cheering sections and fans. But my girls are not athletes. My girls are involved in the arts. And both of my girls are involved in Walnut Hills' production of Frozen Junior. And I'm asking that the district recognize that a live performance of the Walnut Hills Theater Department is safe. I'm asking that the district reverse their decision and green light permission for a live performance of Frozen Junior at Walnut Hills High School. Because they know it to be safe, the Board of Education has allowed live spectators for sports all year for our students, both indoor and outdoor. And more than 550 parents, students, and supporters have joined me in signing a petition to support the allowance of our play at Walnut Hills next week. An expeditious approval will allow us to immediately focus on cross-checks for putting on a safe live show, something that is very important to the growth of our students and our community that continues to fight their way back to live entertainment. Thank you.
Speaker is Yusuf Manir, followed by Mike Evans, followed by Elena Thompson. Go ahead, Mr. Manir.
Hello, my name is Yusuf Manir. I am a senior at Walnut Hills High School and I'm the President of Young Activist Coalition. But you all know who I am. You all actively avoided all of us while we were there, demanding safe schools, demanding schools that don't arrest two kids every day because you all are more dedicated to protecting cops than you are to protecting the kids that you are elected to serve. You all know this. Now, I want to address several of the members of the Board who have stated that they are interested in getting community support behind this before they support it. I want to say that the Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition, the Cincinnati Tenants Union, the IJPC, Evan Holt's campaign, Dr. Kari Moffett, who is a candidate for school boards, Youth Hear Us Now Alliance, and Cincinnati for Justice have all officially, and the Anti-Policeman Brutality Coalition of Cincinnati, have all officially endorsed our campaign and our simple, very simple demands to demand cops out of schools and zero-tolerance discipline out of schools and the replacement of them with restorative justice, which several of you members of the Board have claimed to be in favor despite not taking any concrete actions on it, as well as increased mental health supports in the form of psychologists, counselors, and other mental health supports. These are the very simple things we are demanding. These are the very simple things that you all are refusing to take action on and instead hiding behind your survey of a grand total of, what was it, 32 people who all had to speak in front of cops as if that was a fair situation to put them in? Your survey of 32 people that we have already in much less time gotten more community support from, that has overwhelmingly shown that people want cops out of schools. We're not, we're done asking. We're done asking nicely. And Mr. Messer, this is specifically for you. We're tired of being respectful for people that continuously refuse to listen to us, refuse to meet with us, and not done, and refuse to do the right-
Please address your comments to the presiding officer. I just want to remind the people who are speaking, please address all of your comments, irregardless of whether they're about a Board member or not. Address them to the presiding officer. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Speaker is Mike Evans, followed by Elena Thompson, followed by Seth Weber. Go ahead, Mr. Evans. He still can't hear you, sir. Unmuted on our end. Our next speaker is Elena Thompson, followed by Seth Weber, followed by Christina Kubatis.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Elena Thompson. I'm an attorney and a Gallagher Legal Fellow at the ACLU Ohio. I spent the last six months investigating discipline practices within Cincinnati Public Schools. You know, I've spoken to 100 people, well over 100 people. I've read well over 2,000 pages of data supplied by this school district as well as the police department. Last week, we finally launched that data and it shows an alarming trend. You know, it's clear that the vast majority of school incidents can be handled by teachers or school administrators and should not merit police intervention within this school district. But Cincinnati Public Schools has created a culture of calling SROs at any sign of misbehavior. Rather than training teachers or school administrators in how to de-escalate these situations, CPS has emphasized the use of police as a primary tool of discipline. This Board has said multiple times that the contract between CPD and CPS directs that SROs do not participate in routine school discipline. The actual data tells us that that's not true. You know, the SROs are responding to and actively participating in routine school discipline that administrators and teachers should be and can handle. SROs are responding to nearly 5,000 incidents per year. Most of them are basic fistfights or disorderly conducts. Because of this, more than two students are arrested each school day and over 400 students are negatively interacting with the justice system each year. And then, we know that an initial interaction with the criminal justice system exponentially increases the likelihood of a second recurrence within the same month, particularly for students who have never interacted with the justice system before. We know that SROs are visiting up to seven schools a day, meaning that they're spending an hour on each campus, which makes the program-stated goal of creating meaningful relationships with children nearly impossible. Instead, this looks like a standard beat, like a regular cop would do, except the people that they are policing are students. They are not mentoring. The most concerning thing, though, and what I really want to hit on, is the lack of oversight regarding the memorandum of understanding between the district and the police. The district signed over all of its rights to-
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Seth Weber, followed by Christina Kubatis, followed by Jason Banks. Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
I'm representing Cincinnati Tenants Union and we are supporting the Young Activists Coalition and their call to get CPD out of Cincinnati schools. You know, I think that schools should be a place to nurture and support young people. And looking at the data that ACLU and Young Activists Coalition released, it's impossible to deny that there's a huge problem. Our children do not need to be criminalized. They don't need punishment. They need care, compassion, and patience. And there are more healthy and creative ways of approaching the problems and conflicts that come up among students rather than just throwing police officers at it and introducing students to, you know, the prison system. It's becoming increasingly clear that the racist outcomes we see from policing isn't just a matter of bad individuals. This is a problem that can't be reformed or solved through better training. And it's clear that having police patrol the halls of schools is doing more harm than good. And from my experience with police as a crime reporter in a number of Ohio cities, from my experience, they view themselves and us in a certain way where they think that they're above reproach and they reject any kind of outside criticism, you know, anything, if there's criticism that isn't from a cop, they don't want to hear it. They basically see us as sheep and themselves as herders. And the personalities that police departments attract, they're aggressive people, they're toxic, they're antisocial. I mean, look at the Blue Lives Matter nonsense. Police embrace this and it's a racist reaction to a legitimate movement. And I mean, they wear this on, you know, on their uniforms.
Our next speaker is Christina Kubatis, followed by Jason Banks, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Ms. Kubatis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Christina Kubatis. I'm the Communications Director for Evan Holt for Cincinnati City Council. And I'm speaking today in support of the Young Activists Coalition and their demand to remove officers from CPS. I would like to remind you that it is not normal to have police in schools. This is not a universal thing that you find in every school. So, already, there is an inequity being created through their presence. And this inequity is only worsened by the fact that police cannot provide safety. They can only provide control. And their mere presence creates an atmosphere of intimidation. Everyone is rightly concerned about the need to keep students safe, but what does it actually mean and what does it actually look like? For instance, there was talk about if a student brings a knife to school. But if a student does that, there are circumstances that led up to that. And addressing those circumstances is how you prevent violence from occurring. If instead, a student is arrested, taken out of school, cast away as a criminal, does that make them safer or does it further separate them from support systems and put them on a cycle to only repeat the behavior and continue to find themselves in police custody as they go on into adulthood? We need actual safety for all students. And I just want to say how powerful and impressive it is that we have students coming together and forming something like the Young Activists Coalition. They should be met with respect and, most importantly, listened to. Because anyone who is a teacher or parent knows just how difficult it is to get young people to really care about something. So, for them to feel this strongly enough to take a stand and demand changes from the adults in their lives, like I said, that is powerful. It's impressive. It should be respected and listened to.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is, excuse me, Jason Banks, followed by Ruth DeBono, followed by Kendra Phelps. Go ahead, Mr. Banks.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak again tonight. My name's Jason Banks. I've been a teacher in CPS for 20 years. And I spoke at the last Board meeting about the district's choice to no longer count children of employees who live outside of the district as in-district students. After I spoke at the last meeting, Mr. Hoying explained how the current policy is structured and Superintendent Mitchell explained the rationale behind Board Policy 5113. Thank you for those explanations. However, I wanted to make sure my request was clear. I'm not asking for you to change the current policy and count all children of out-of-district employees as in-district students, although I do believe that would be a good policy to reinstate. And I would be happy to speak about that at another time if you like. Instead, I am asking that you consider allowing the out-of-district families that started under the old policy to continue under that old policy. Years ago, when we moved just outside of the district line, the district had been counting the children of employees as in-district students decades. So, when the Board decided to no longer count my children as in-district students in 2016, it was like the rug was pulled from underneath us. Of course, at that time, my children were not forced to leave the CPS schools they were already attending. But now that my daughter is moving from sixth grade to seventh grade, she has been denied enrollment into her high school of choice. She is now a student without a school. I've been told that my child will likely get into her school of choice, but I cannot leave my child's education to chance. This is an immediate concern for my family. One of my children currently does not have a school to attend next year. It seems like a reasonable and fair request for me to ask the Board to amend Board Policy 5113 to allow families who had children enrolled in CPS before the Board changed this policy to finish their time in CPS as in-district students. I hope you agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by Kendra Phelps, followed by Bella. Go ahead, Ms. DeBono.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono. I'm a student at Walnut Hills High School. And I'm here with the Young Activists Coalition to talk about police presence in our schools. Every single day that an SRO is walking into a school, CPS is actively failing its students. School resource offices are, have the same equipment as a standard BICOP and do not, and based on our data, do not form good relationships with students. As Elena was talking about earlier, the MOU before, between CPS and CPD completely relinquishes control from CPS over CPD. This means that CPD could put as many officers in there in school as they want and they don't have any responsibility to report their changes or what they're doing to CPS. This, however, is something that could be changed and reversed with just 30 days. And we know that now is the time to do that. The days- ......... You have not been open to having conversations with us. And when the conversation with Coheer only included 32 people and did not and could not be representative, truly representatives of students in the community. Young Activists Coalition, on the other hand, has talked with many community members, organizations who endorse and support us and have had done a survey in less time with over 50, with more responses supporting removing SROs from schools. We have, we have a petition with over 400 signatures. And by ignoring us, you're ignoring what the community truly wants. You try to say that you are listening to what we want, but if you want to do what is best for students, you need to listen to us and listen to the data, which clearly proves that it is not only unnecessary but harmful to have police officers in schools where children are supposed to learn and be taught not to be criminalized and bundled into the criminal justices.
Thank you.
DeBono, our next speaker is- DeBono, our next speaker is Kendra Phelps, followed by Bella Gordo, followed by Hillary Perez. Go ahead, Ms. Phelps.
Good evening, board members. Teachers hope that most families will feel safe allowing their children to return to school in person in the fall. However, we believe families who will need a remote option should have one that is instructionally sound. Concurrent learning is not it. Feedback from Walnut Hills teachers who were thrown into a situation where they're trying to teach both in-person and remote students at the same time clearly show that it sacrifices instructional time for both groups. As a parent of a child participating in concurrent, in the concurrent learning model, I can attest to the fact that my child sitting and watching instruction is not meeting his needs. We ask that you do what is right by those students that need remote and remote option next year and that you have dedicated teachers to meet their needs by direct instruction through a remote option with the Google Meet. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bella Gordo, followed by Hillary Perez, followed by Eliza O'Keefe. Go ahead, Ms. Gordo.
Hi, I'm Bella Gordo. I'm a student organizer with the Young Activist Coalition, and I'm here to demand that the school board remove SROs out of our schools and implement proper restorative justice. First off, I'd like to address the plain and simple fact that school resource officers are police officers at their core. A 40-hour training does not uniquely qualify police officers to enter the school board, then to the school building and handle children. Years of training and studying children's behavior does, which is something that child psychologists, social workers, and counselors have plenty of. Yet children see more cops in their schools than they do, than they see those with that training. CPS SROs arrest two children every single school day. These officers have proven time and time again that they do not understand how to de-espate situations and that they only endanger those involved and further escalate. We do not need SROs to nicely explain to children why they're being detained or to create better relationships with the children that they traumatize. We need them to leave. What we need is a proper implementation of restorative justice and a reimagining of the extremely harmful and racist punitive system that persists within CPS. And the 400 and over, 400 and over community members, a much greater number than 20 students and 10 parents, mind you, that Cohere interviewed, have signed our petition demanding these changes. You cannot place students in a room with police officers, discuss police officers' presence, and expect unbiased results. It is your job as school board members and public servants to protect and serve children, and yet continually you endanger them without question. We are not creating a bigger crisis in the community, shout out Ryan Messer, by demanding that we get the changes that the community wants to see. You are creating and maintaining a crisis by constantly endangering the well-being, education, and future of the students that you serve. Thank you.
Speaker is Hillary Perez, followed by Eliza O'Keefe, followed by Kayla Reidy. Go ahead, Ms. Perez.
Hi, my name is Hillary Perez. I'm a parent of two boys at Hyde Park School, and I'm here to follow up about the transportation system. I listened with interest to this afternoon's meeting of the Health and Safety Committee, including the discussion of our bus system. What I heard was that things used to be a lot worse and that the system is incredibly complicated. The tune of 1,300 bus routes operated daily, an extraordinary number. I heard about incremental changes and efforts toward improvement. But what I did not hear are major reforms that will solve the longstanding problems. I can't speak to recent improvements compared to how things were more than two years ago, but I can tell you a certainty that it isn't enough. A less bad system is not good enough. If it's truly too big and too complex to be managed centrally, then we need to find another solution. What we need is simple. We need buses that run on time and drop off at the correct locations. We need a functional website so that parents can access the most basic information about bus routes. Registration, bus route number, vendor, drop-off time, and pickup times and locations. Having a system with real-time updates is for me in the would-like category, not in the must-have. It would be amazing that the critical needs are much more basic than that. There was some discussion of call volume at the transportation number, and I want to thank board member Ms. Bates for her suggestion of having most of that information available online. Call volume is really a symptom of poor communication elsewhere. Truly, most modern parents hate having to make phone calls. We don't want to be calling the call center. I also want to thank board member Mr. Messer for being a conduit for much of the community feedback that's been shared online and particularly for suggesting a role of a parent advisory committee. There's a lot more that needs to be said, more than two minutes worth, more that needs to be heard. Let us get involved, give some feedback, and let the transportation system earn our trust back. Thanks for your time.
Speaker is Kayla Reidy, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers.
My name is Kayla Reidy, and I am a senior at Walnut Hills High School. I am here today on behalf of Young Activist Coalition. Earlier this evening at the Board Health and Safety Committee meeting, Cohere presented their results from their focus group on SROs. First, please take note of the fact that the person representing Cohere admitted that Cohere could not say that the sample was definitely representative of the district. It is impossible for a group of 20 students and 12 parents to be representative of a district of over 35,000 students. Additionally, there were five SROs in the room during the focus group. A person will not give an unbiased opinion about SROs with five SROs sitting right next to them. Young Activist Coalition, partnered with the ACLU of Ohio, has begun the circulation of a survey at the request of board members Messer and Lindy, which we hope will be more representative of the entire district. So far, we already have more participation than that of the focus group, and it is showing overwhelming support for removing SROs. It is also important to note that irregardless of the survey results, the data speaks for itself. This board was elected to do what is best for the students of CPS, not what certain people think is best for the students of CPS. You have a duty to your Black and Brown students to protect them from these SROs who are arresting approximately two students every single school day. You must end your contract with the Cincinnati Police Department and remove all SROs from CPS schools. Thank you.
Our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Hello, everyone. I just have several things for this evening, but it's really exciting to see how many teachers who have already signed up to work with the summer scholars. I think it's going to be a great program. But there is summer scholars for pre-K. And there are teachers who have their children signed up for preschool, and they were told that they would also receive the waiver of the pre-K fees. These are teachers who live in the district, and they have been told that they don't qualify by the principal of the school where their children go to preschool. Can this be clarified with the principals? Because there seems to be a communication breakdown with the schools. And as you know, if you are paying tuition, it's very, very expensive for kids to participate with preschool. And then there are the teachers within the district whose children attend CPS as a resident, and they live outside. Those children have already been grandfathered into the district, just like Jason was speaking of this evening. What will the districts, when will the districts' date be that students can enroll? Because it is really leaving families hanging out there with no options, and they would like to be able to do that. And the last thing I would like to do is to, I have questions about the amended appropriation resolution that you all are going to be voting on this evening. The bond retirement fund has more than doubled for this year and increased by $63.7 million. I would like to get a copy of the most recent fund balances and transfers in and out. It makes it really difficult to be able to follow the money. And if this is money that was left from other lines, it's a shame when we have kids who are doing concurrent learning when we would have been able to have dedicated teachers. And I would like to follow this transfer of this money. But it's becoming increasingly difficult being able to follow all of the changes with the finances with all of these meetings that are still remote. The committee meetings are remote. There's not always time where you are allowed to speak in some of the committee meetings, which I find very frustrating. And I hope that those meetings will be able to soon be open to the public. Committee meetings, I'm sure, could be held in the ILC. If if students can be in school, then they should be able to be in school also. We have some concern about the concurrent learning. And I just found out today that there is a program, you have to register with the state in order to do that. And we have not been part of that presentation or with the planning. But yet, the district is designing a feedback session for the concurrent learning. And this is really making it difficult. This model needs to have clarity with CFT as the district moves forward if they are going to have plans for concurrent learning. It is not reasonable to ask teachers to teach remotely and online in person at the same time. This option needs to have a dedicated teacher at the schools. And it's, it's, I have not found one teacher who have said that concurrent learning has been, they felt in the best interest of students either in the classroom or at home. It is not conducive to the type of teaching and learning that our families and children are used to. So I hope I can get a copy of that transfer in and transfer out. So thank you.
President Jones?
Yes.
If I could add some clarification to one of the concerns?
Yes, go ahead.
So one of the speakers tonight was a Walnut Hills parent who spoke about having an audience for a live performance. So winter athletics did take place, however, without fans in the audience, because we knew the kids would have their masks off. The only time fans were allowed into the audience was for a very specific group of kids, and those were our graduating seniors. And they were allowed so many people to come into the gymnasium. We did decide to run a proof of concept with the indoor performance with SCPA for a limited number of seats so that, quite honestly, we could learn to be able to provide a safe environment for kids. And so, just like we run a pilot at Walnut that we didn't run anywhere else, we tested the pilot at SCPA in terms of a live performance with an audience there with limited number of seats. And so, our chief strategy officer is really looking very carefully on the protocols as well as if there were transmissions that we could tie back to that time period to say whether or not it would be safe for us to move forward. We will have indoor graduations, but it will be at a very large venue at UC at their Fifth Third Arena. And they are limiting the number of people who can be there. But again, it is a very large venue. And so, this is the reason we have not allowed an indoor performances by any other schools, because we want to test it out at one school first, just like we're testing out other things at Walnut Hills without testing out at other places. So I just wanted to provide that point of clarification.
Thank you for the clarification, Superintendent. Okay. Does anyone have any kudos? Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I did want to give a just general shout-out, kudos to all of our teachers this year for a couple of things. I think we're coming up on about a month through the being back to all in-person learning. And I wanted to, if the risk of stating the obvious, I don't think this is, this pandemic year is necessarily what anybody signed up for. And I just wanted to thank all the teachers in Cincinnati Public Schools for working through this, for showing up for your kids, and for helping make what we're doing possible. And I wanted to say thank you. And I also wanted to thank all the teachers who are engaging with their students on the history that's happening around us. I was thinking in particular of the Derek Chauvin verdict last week, but not limited to that. As a board member, as a former teacher, and as a parent, I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work that our teachers are doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Mr. Morosky?
So we have celebrated a lot of students tonight, and I think kudos is warranted regardless of how you feel about them or their demands to the Young Activist Coalition because their persistence and their data-driven approach with the ACLU has put this issue squarely on our radar. I know it's affected my opinion a great deal as far as how I feel about the SRO program, but I think they deserve kudos for their staunch activism and forcing the conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, Madam President, I have two kudos tonight. Special kudos goes out to the Beyond the Tassel team for the informational segment on entrepreneurship. I was able to view that on Facebook Live. Kudos to Ms. Brittany Cousins and her engagement with Ms. Dion Owens of Junior Achievement. That was a very excellent presentation and all of those who were involved with that. My second kudos goes out to Preschool Promise had a pitch night, and I thought was very informational and very creative for them to identify partnering with community programming that would enhance some of the preschool learning. And I was able to view that, and I want to give kudos to Preschool Promise for that. And Ms. Char Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other kudos? All righty, Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, we have a list of retirements today. First of all, I'll announce and commemorate the retirements of our teachers. Karen L. Adar Linzer, James S. Byrne, George A. Benz, Lisa Y. Blair, Amy C. Boyle, Mary E. Davis, Heather E. Dell, Michael K. Finnegan, Jennifer Thompson-Franzoi, Terry L. Friend, Brenda S. Harper, Noreen P. Hatton, Stephen J. Hayes, Cynthia M. Helmchen, Jennifer McMahon, Kim S. Miller Burke, Eileen T. Morganhoff, Bernal John Munlin, Samuel Pagoni, Beverly Sass, Darla J. Sears, Dennis C. Smith, Jay Lee Turner, Ellen R. Wathan, Mary T. Wertheimer, and Kelly M. Wilfong. And our retirements from our civil service personnel are Dorothy Blackburn, Sheila McLean, Teresa Nichols, Carla Rubin, and Betty Simpson. So we thank these professionals for their service to the district and our children and wish them well in their retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, so we'll move on to board matters. This board matters item is something that I put on there. It should take no more than five minutes. Basically, well, we all, we had the first committee of the whole meeting, and I was interested in any feedback that board members had and or any feedback or suggestions for how to strengthen it moving forward. So, Mr. Morosky, I saw your hand.
I thought it was excellent, and I'm glad we're doing them.
Short and simple, thank you. Anything, any other comment? Everything sounds good, and it went well. I thought it went well. I thought the topic was very on point. And we look forward to having more discussions like that. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think it was great. And we just needed an assignment at the end of the meeting about the justing the protocol.
Yes. Yes, we did. Okay. Great. Anything else then regarding that? Thank you for the feedback, and we look forward to the next one, which is mid-May. All right, Ms. Bolton, please present the resolution for board consideration.
Thank you, I will. And may need some assistance from the treasurer, especially since it's been raised also during public comment. We have Cincinnati Public Schools fiscal year 2020-21 amended appropriations resolution. I present as written, and it is explained throughout the resolution. And I submit no approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like the treasurer to chime in and describe this and also maybe follow up with whatever else she might want to say.
Sure, certainly. I'd be happy to explain.
Sure, certainly. I'd be happy to explain. So the board authorizes spending at the fund level through an appropriations resolution. So every fund has to have a value, an estimated value of spend for the year. And as more information comes, more grants come, we come back to you every time to allow us to spend that money. The Bond Retirement Fund is directly related to the refinancing of the 2014 COPS, the debt that we incurred back in 2016, refunded in '14, and now refunded it again. And so, what this allows me to do is pay off the old debt so that we can save the district money. So that's all that's doing is taking the old debt, just like refinancing a mortgage. Okay. The other two, the second one was a miscalculation on a carryover value. It was duplicated in the calculation by accident, so they're reducing appropriations. We don't underspend, overspend our allocation. And the third one was the state just giving us a tad more money, and so we're just adding it to the budget so that the schools can spend it. I think it's the Title I School Improvement Grant.
Any additional comments to that, Ms. Bolton? Thank you for the clarification. All right. Any other discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. I'm sorry, Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. All right, Superintendent, do you have a report?
I do. I have a very brief report. You know, I always like to highlight our wonderful students. So I know that we're pulling up a PowerPoint just to share some highlights with you. Next slide, please. So Gamble Montessori High School 2021 Green Ribbon Award. Deciding the first school in the state of Ohio and one of 27 in the nation. So representatives from Gamble will be going to Washington, D.C. in this in September to receive their award. Very nice. All right, second slide, please. We are super excited about summer scholars, and that kicks off on June the 2nd through the 30th. And as you all may know, we are offering this for pre-K through 12th grade students. So we're excited about this. We have lots of teachers and other staff who are very happy to be working with our young people for the summer. We will provide transportation as well as meal service. Next slide. High School Lottery. So I sent out a message to parents last week. So the high school lottery session has closed, and you should, parents should be receiving information very soon in May regarding their high school choice for the upcoming school year, so we're excited about that. And I believe this is the last slide. So each year, we are so honored to be able to have one of our educators selected for the Lawrence Hawkins Award. And it is a $10,000 award that goes to the person personally. And so, here are all of our finalists. And on May the 6th, we will be announcing along with Western Southern the actual winner of the Lawrence Hawkins Award. So we're very excited to congratulate everyone, all of our parents, all of our students, and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve the revised superintendent's recommendations?
So, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
No. I've got to answer. Sorry.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wagner?
Just a highlight on financial news. If you'll take note on page four of the finance treasurer's report, we've updated our vision statement, just for you to peruse. But in terms of the budget building update, PLT is working through some more of the cost items. And we're planning our first public presentation, the next committee, the whole meeting, May 19, so we can have some dialogue around that. We don't have any news, new information on pandemic or grants. But we did have a release of the House version of the governor's budget in a simulation that came out. It shows that we will estimate to increase revenues of $5.9 million for next year in general fund and in fiscal year '23, 1.7. Smaller than what Patterson formally would have done for us. But like I said, this is just the House version. It's going to change a lot between now and the end of June. So just trying to keep you in the update.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wagner? Okay, ready for the vote?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers? Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Inquiries and updates. Ms. Bowers, you have one?
I actually have two.
You have two?
One's on here, but I have two. The first update was the OSBA Collective Bargaining Workshop. I was a participant on April 20th. And as a board member whose first time experiencing the collective bargaining experience through multiple unions, I thought this was helpful in getting me background information on processes in addition to a path forward in the current season of collective bargaining. So most interesting, acknowledging the outlier, the pandemic, was what was discussed in the process of remote bargaining. So that was good information for me as a new board member, just to get that that information. The second update was that the OSBA Black Caucus Initiative, I was actually directed, I was guided to by Mr. Morosky, to the chair, Mr. Al. I can't think of his last name.
Long.
Thank you, Al Long. The purpose of this was to begin discussion. And I just want to give acknowledgement to our conversation with the college and career presenters, because this goes right along with some of the things they were talking about today. And so, it was the purpose of discussions around possible collaboration with Central State University, maximizing resources in order to allow students in the area districts to have a clear pathway of enrollment in Ohio's only land-grant-funded university. And so, with that, CPS, which was me, in addition to Norwood Princeton, as well as North College Hill City Schools, was present. And as we are celebrating Gamble Montessori's Green Ribbon acknowledgement, and then, of course, information around the agribusiness and aching, it just seemed like there would be a potential interest that would benefit our students beyond the Tassel, especially with regards to some of their majors, which is agriculture engineering, sustainable agriculture, as well as water resources management. And as I mentioned earlier, I will talk about this more in the student achievement just on how maybe this could be just maybe looked into. And that's my updates.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, wow. Okay. We'll just go down. Ms. Bates?
Okay, I have two. And one is for the superintendent, and I want...
Is this, are you doing assignment?
No, no, no.
Oh, this is an inquiry and nothing?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Right, right. And it's a follow-up with the superintendent on the progress he made in following up with the city on the list of issues they had with us. So Superintendent Mitchell?
Yes, so prior to board member Bates following up with me about this, we'd already scheduled a meeting with the city manager. And so, actually, it will involve Jeremy, Jen, and I. It's Thursday. But we'll be able to provide an update after Thursday. I'm sorry, I'm just like looking at Jen on the date.
Okay, good. Thank you. And my second one is an update from our Health and Safety Committee meeting. There will be a report, but the committee made a recommendation that we felt was rather urgent in nature. And that was relative to the article that I distributed to everybody regarding, and it was from the Cincinnati Enquirer, Cameron Knight. The headline, "In the past 12 months, 477 juveniles have been assaulted or killed in Cincinnati." And after that article was written, we lost one of our own students. This is an issue of an extremely critical nature. And this requires leadership. And what we are recommending, our committee, is that, and we're bringing this to the board for either for discussion, could be, that there was a plan to meet with at least one committee of city council, and that this be the top of the agenda because it is so urgent. Now, if it gets too complicated, and I'm throwing this in, for the whole board to meet with this committee or council, perhaps Health and Safety can. Either way, it's an urgent issue. We have shared resources. And I must say, this came up, I thought it was relative to the SRO discussion, because we have police officers that are trained to work with students, and the beat officers are not. So, you know, there's there's good crossover there as far as the ability to communicate and train. There's just, Cincinnati Rec has youth programs, and they've been communicating with with us on that. The city has plans for programming. But a targeted, you know, a targeted collaborative proactive way to address, at least begin to address this this issue is is very important. And so, the request is to follow up on the board's discussion to meet with the city council or the city council committee, and then make the assignment to either the full board or the committee, whatever the board's pleasure is, to take this on really as soon as possible. Because with this trajectory, if it continues the way it is, we're going to be exceeding prior years' assaults and homicides with our youth, which is unacceptable, and it should be to the leadership of the city.
I think for me personally, I, it is a pressing issue. I would suggest maybe that Health and Safety have a discussion about how we might approach this, when you said it requires leadership. How, what are we talking about in terms of how the city might, how we might work with the city and what have you? I can remember one of our previous board meetings when we said that we would not do a formal meeting between us and the city until after November or late in the fall. We said that. We made that decision. So if you're suggesting something different, then maybe it would be helpful if the committee could do that and then bring it back to the board. Certainly, we can move forward on some level of discussion, but I'm under the impression it wasn't going to be a formal meeting per se. So however, if you want to recommend one person or however, maybe that's the job of the Health and Safety Committee. That's just my thought about it. Anybody else have any thoughts about that? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think if that's the particular topic, it would make sense for Health and Safety to pursue that particular topic. We have the administration based upon who's attending the meeting with the city manager. It sounds like it's a technology and Wi-Fi kind of thing. Then indeed, that starts to be a different topic and possibly different jurisdiction. But I'll just remind us all that when we used to do this, what was what? And I think this is, yeah, this is true, that it was whatever member was able to attend. And so, if we, you know, if we got four, it was a notice meeting to begin with. If we got four, there was a quorum. And most of the time, it wasn't the whole board doing that. I think that was, I can only, I think I remember two that were like that. But it, I think that would might might be able to cover the approach. But I do think Health and Safety ought to pursue this particular topic. I think that makes complete sense.
Okay, so I'll make that assignment?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, and I think probably, you know, the initial conversation came with the education. So my question is, would this be with maybe a different group than maybe that initial that? Is there, there's the youth, and then there's the safety. Though I think it may be, to me, it's bigger than education. It's the safety of our children, both in and outside of our buildings. So wondering if that, you know, may dictate a look at which committee it would best fit with. And hopefully, council's probably talking about the same thing, who's going to take the lead? So that might be a great connection point.
Okay, just to keep us moving, Ms. Bates, does that help you?
Yeah.
In terms of, okay.
I'll make the assignment.
Thank you. All right, any other inquiries and updates? I saw hands. Just go around. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. My, they're, they're all short. I'll make them as quick as I can. I'll just read all three. One, I was hoping to get an update inquiry on the extent to which tutoring, that targets learning loss as a part of the financial planning we're doing for next year, whether that's tonight or the future meeting, I wanted to inquire about that. Second, I had mentioned this in the minutes on the Student Achievement Committee, but I would love to know when we could get an update on what enrollment is looking like for summer school. It was my second inquiry. And then the third was, I really appreciated the MAP memo that came out today. It was very helpful to see. And I wanted to ask, when would be an appropriate time for us to talk about what was in it? So it was update on tutoring and the budget was one. Update on enrollment for summer school was two.
Okay, okay. I apologize, but I'm having trouble. And it's just because of the mask normally, so I'm not sure what the the next...
Sorry.
That's okay.
Did you catch the first one?
Update on the tutoring?
Yep. And then two was update on enrollment for summer school.
Okay.
And then the third was a time to discuss the MAP memo that came out today.
Okay. Are you wanting updates? You're you're directing these to the superintendent in terms of updates that you just want her to give information on? Or you want to make this an assignment?
No, I think what I'm looking for is, the question I'm asking is, when could we hear about those three topics?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. Okay, it, though, actually, it really is an assignment. If you want to know information, we have to give them time to work on that.
I was unclear. Maybe things that people already know and already have, or if it needs to be at a future meeting, that's also.
Okay. Okay. How about to make it easy, let's you and I talk about, we can even put it on the agenda, or we could make an assignment or, you know, to give to administration to provide that information, to put it on the agenda or report back?
Sure.
Okay. Great. Any other, I'm sorry.
I want, I want just...
Well, hold on. I'm going around here. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. Just a couple inquiries to administration via the superintendent. One was, and you may have an answer now. If you don't, fine. It'll be a future meeting. But one was regarding the field trip rules. Some schools go to like their neighborhood rec center, which is next door, right? I'm thinking of Douglas specifically. But the field trip rule, for educational opportunities, but the field trip rule impacts that too, if I'm not mistaken. Or am, I guess that's my first question. Am I mistaken?
So honestly, this isn't something that we've discussed at length recently related to field trips. I don't think that we were thinking of going next door to the rec center as a field trip.
Okay.
I think that we were thinking about large places that might have kids from other schools and other districts there, like the art museum or the natural history museum. So I wouldn't say that we would prohibit kids from going next door to the rec center. I think that there are kids that are probably doing that in other rec centers that are close to their school. But we're happy to look at and clarify.
Great, yeah. I don't want to teeter into assignment area, but yeah, maybe to clarify for folks so they know, that'd be cool. Thank you so much, Superintendent. And my second inquiry is just to kind of put on radar. It strikes me as, I'm thinking about my own professional life and talking to like teachers or APs or principals who just happen to be pals or whatever, that the virtual meetings have been a real time saver, particularly for principals who, you know, have to be out of a building an entire day for an hour meeting, maybe. Might be grossly exaggerating, but like being able to do that meeting right in the, you know, in their office and then be there if something derails at the school. I just kind of want to throw it out there is, I know it's been way helpful for me and our work life at Cradle Cincinnati is changing for everybody, because a lot of us, myself included, have found ways to be way more efficient. So maybe just throw it out there, you might already be talking about it. So I'm, maybe just throw it out there, you might already be talking about it. So if you are, I apologize, but just want to toss that out.
Yeah, no worries. We will look at it for all meetings that we hold. I will say that we have not pulled the principals all year. We're doing virtual meetings with them, but let me fact check that. Have we pulled the principals?
No, you haven't. Oh, sorry, no, you haven't. And that was what I was saying, like, and it's, I've heard great stories of how much more time there is so they can have the meetings. And as long as the meetings are effective, if the meetings stink, then forget I said anything. But if the meetings are effective, they just seem to value that extra time they're doing.
Ms. Bolton, followed by Ms. Bowers.
Yes, thank you. I appreciated the wonderful list of all the teachers that have expressed an interest and are, you know, looking in terms of summer scholars. It's a great turnout and maybe by the time we get into early May or May 10th at the next meeting, we can almost do it by schools because that would have been helpful for me. So that's just the, kind of an update that would help me. The inquiry I'm making is something that I think President Sellers has mentioned and became familiar with. And that is a letter that came from the Ohio Department of Ed, which was giving us a certain parameters as to what we can do or not do innovatively, especially mentioning concurrent and then saying that somehow, I don't know, we have to have a sign off from our unions? Is that, that's, I just, I think the, I think the community should know that.
Yes, so I was looking for the exact language. I want to ask our deputy superintendent to come forward. She was the one who actually made me aware of an application through the Ohio Department of Education regarding innovation and remote learning flexibility. I was looking it up, sorry.
Great, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. We have to submit an application. There's a rule book, but part of the rule book is getting a lot of support from CFT.
Is that for concurrent or is that for all of our innovative plans or that have to be approved by the Ohio Department of Ed?
It includes concurrent, but it's more so remote learning for next year innovation. What's not clear is that the legislature has not granted the level of flexibility that they have done this past school year. So we're still waiting for that response.
So for my clarity, we have to develop a plan about next year's all innovation or just remote innovation for instruction?
The application is titled innovation for next school year. So there is a meeting, there is a meeting tomorrow with a state representative, Connie Solano, Emily Campbell, and Megan, who is running our small test of change at Walnut for concurrent. So we do have a meeting set up tomorrow and then we will have more specific answers then. But at this time, if we move towards concurrent, I can with certainty say that we have to complete an application.
But the title was about innovation.
Innovation.
So I just think that's interesting. It's hard for me to believe that the state legislature would be supportive of that effort on the part of ODE. I mean, it makes perfect sense to get everybody involved and be part of it, but that's a tremendous compromise and part of the authority of the board and our instructional leadership. So maybe we need to think about that.
And, um, Keanu, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did have to complete some type of an application even for this year.
Yes, we submitted, we have our plan on file with the state for this academic school year. We also submitted our summer scholars program. So everything that we have introduced over this past year during the pandemic, we have on file with the state.
But this would be a new?
This is a new one for, for the fall.
Did the other ones require a union?
No, they did not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Wow, that's the most inquiries and updates that we had in a while. But a, a couple of them are turning into assignments. Ms. Bowers, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, President Jones. Just in reaction to Board Member Lindy's request, I think two out of the three can be discussed next Friday in SAC, if you would like that to be put on the agenda. What was the first one?
So the first one was about tutoring ideas and whether that's part of the financial planning for the federal funds we have for next year. And that, you know, whether that's in SAC, at a budget discussion, a board meeting, I'm, I'm not at all picky. I just think it's a good, important topic for us to talk about in the next coming weeks.
Okay, and so the two, the summer learning numbers and then?
The map, map results.
Off the top of the agenda.
Okay.
That's great. Nevermind, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, assignments. Mr. Morosky?
I have two assignments. The first is, I think, simple. So Gamble Montessori Elementary, y'all are familiar with that building, sure, the old high school. Gamble Montessori Elementary. Because it is an elementary school now, there is more of a car line than there was before. And if you've, you know where I'm going with this? And if you've been there, it is, you're locked in and it's a pretty unsafe if something, you know, emergency vehicle, let's say, had to get there. So I'm curious, just kind of an engineering sort of thing, and it's not my specialty. There was an exit on Westwood Northern that some of y'all may be familiar with, I know back in the day. And I was wondering if we could look at a possibility of reopening that?
We can definitely look at it. Sarah, are you catching this? I will say, probably are aware of this, but that, Westwood Northern is really, really very busy and cars tend to fly up and down that road, which is maybe the reason why it was changed. But at the same, so we can look into it.
Okay.
And, and we can also look into another possibility to alleviate.
Yeah. Y'all are smarter than me. I'm sure if there's another possibility, that's fine. It just gets locked up pretty good. And then my second one, which is probably not as simple, but y'all probably did see the Local 12 story about our disproportionate disciplining of black students, which I don't think is a surprise to any of us. I was surprised that it was five times more in Cleveland and Columbus, I will admit. I'm sorry, twice as much as five times and those districts are two and a half. My opinion, as you all are likely aware, over the past number of meetings, has evolved regarding the cops' presence in our schools. And I've read the ACLU report before it was put on the news and it is pretty compelling. And I have yet to see any good data that says the SRO program is positive. And so I really think this conversation needs to happen more seriously than it has been. And so if that's board matters, it's board matters. I know it was discussed in health and safety. And I know I gave an assignment at the last meeting to health and safety to inquire as to whether or not we keep transcripts of the conversations cops have with kids. I don't believe that we do, but maybe Ms. Bates can let me know if that did come up. But I do think we need to have this conversation because at the end of the day, a lot of the speakers brought up the point that cops are taught to punish, or social workers who are taught to help. And that is their job and I do have concerns with the amount of black students that are getting arrested. So I, I would like to either, A, be compelling data that combats the data the ACLU has put forward. And if we don't, then I think we need to have a serious discussion about terminating our relationship with the police department.
Okay, I think Ms. Bates wanted to have, she has a follow up.
We did have this discussion in health and safety and that data is from the Young Activists Coalition. And we received it because I asked for a written report. We, we went right up to, we did not have time for their report. And I wanted to hear from the administration as well. But the data that was reported was, according to Mr. Hoing in, in our conversation, it was for this, the SROs in the city. So the charter schools are in there, the parochial schools are in there. It's, it's not broken out particular to Cincinnati public schools. And that has to be broken down a little bit better. That may be why it's out of filter. Is that not correct, Mr. Hoing?
It's not. The data I'm looking at is from the ACLU and it's about our district.
Is what?
It's from the ACLU and it's about our district.
It came from the Young Activists.
Correct, it came through them, but the ACLU put it together.
Mr. Hoing is going to come up and clarify for me.
We're looking at the data. We have a meeting set up with the ACLU to see. You know, a lot of the data in that report is school discipline data, which is, is different than arrest or encounter data with the Cincinnati. And so again, that's school discipline data. We have that, of course we have that. We do not have the encounter data and I don't know necessarily where they received it. City of Cincinnati has advised that they didn't respond to the Young Activists in, in any kind of a public records request, but we're meeting with them. And again, I, I expect it to be a positive meeting with them. I, I would like to learn and then I'm glad to report back to you the source for their data.
Well, I think, I think the, the data from the, the police came from the Cincinnati Police Department, if I understand it correctly.
I, I don't know. Again, we, we asked the Cincinnati, City of Cincinnati to provide us the same data they provided the Young Activists and they said they did not respond to a Young Activists request for information. But we will find out where and what supports their data and absolutely report back.
Well, real quick, Ms. Jones, if that's all right, since Mr. Hoing is here, and I, it was assigned to health and safety, but if you did give this update in health and safety, I, I would like to know now if it's okay. So the assignment that I gave health and safety was, do we have records of the conversations that take place between students and cops when they have their conferences? Because the, the comment I made the last time was, if nothing else, if we don't, that opens us up to all kinds of liabilities. I have other concerns with it, but I'm, I'm curious if we have that data. Do we know what happens when cops talk to our kids? Because we don't really have oversight over it, do we?
So it depends. We, we sit in some of those meetings because that's what the board policy directs us to do. I don't think there's transcript, as far as I know, there's not transcripts taken. I, I also don't know what liability you'd be concerned about that opening this up to. But yes, for the most part, you know, our, our employees are sitting in on meetings with, whether that's a JFS investigator coming in or other types of investigators. In, in large part, yeah, there are school employees sitting in on those. Now, if they're outside of school, not necessarily. Transcripts, no. I, I'm not aware of recordings being taken of meetings or, you know, videos or, or otherwise.
Okay. So again, I, I, I wanted to have an opportunity to put it in a broader context because we did make an assignment to student achievement. We had a full discussion acknowledging the, the need to address the concerns that the Young Activists Coalition was bringing to us. We had a discussion about the need to really look thoroughly at the MOU, to look at the data, what the district had, and that we could, could come up with some, that's, health and safety would come up with some ideas, recommendations for how to address it. The broader issue is that I think maybe Mr. Morosky is trying to get to, that the question on the table is, do we want SROs in schools? Okay? And I think we have to get there. So your suggestion to have it as a board matters?
Yeah.
I think we have to do the work first in the committees and, and then let's deal with it. I mean, we, we were confronted with it every single time we have a meeting and it's not that we have, we're avoiding it. We are working on it. We have been working on it in the committee since we made the assignment. So we have to give it time. I mean, I am 100% in favor of us addressing this. But we have to address it in the committees. We have to look at the data as you're asking for. We'll look at the data, we want to look at the MOU. We have to make some decisions and take some actions. What's the next step? And then I think it is appropriate to bring it to board matters.
Well, so I'm, yeah, and I appreciate that. But I'm, I'm just curious if we can do that after Mr. Hoing has his conversation with the ACLU? If that's happening this week? Or if we're going to wait another month till health and safety meets again? And then another month after that? Or if we could have the conversation after it? Because really what I'm asking for that I haven't seen, I've seen oodles and oodles of compelling data that the program doesn't work. And not only it doesn't work, but actually is ineffective and harms black kids and kids of color. So what I would like to see is something that says something different than that. And I haven't, all I hear is they have good relations with kids and my, it doesn't, that doesn't really, isn't meaningful to me.
Okay. I, I, I think, I think your point is well taken. But I, again, I'm going to say, we asked student achievement to do everything that you're asking. And I don't know if that's, if, I'm health and safety, I'm sorry. And, and maybe that's just a push to get the work done, including looking at the ACLU data and anything else that needs to happen. And I see Ms. Bolton's hands been up, so I'm going to.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with that. The ACLU data is the, the Young Activists data. And it's not the ACLU, it's their foundation, it's an intern from their foundation who's bringing this forward. And it's the office in Columbus. So we just received that information because I asked for a written report from the Young Activists on Friday. So today, with the weekend in between, there was no, I mean, Mr. Hoing got a conversation in with the attorney between that time. But to get the data, you know, from the city to compare, to sort out, Stone Community School from, you know, Mc, yeah, McNicholas, McNicholas, all those, from that data, the time hasn't elapsed to be able to do that. So we may have to wait until the next meeting because it's more than just getting raw data. And then that's apparently what happened. Somebody gave raw data to somebody and it may or may not have been official. We just don't know.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Does that address what you're asking for though in the assignment? Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think that the next board meeting would be a good time to have it for board matters, just as an open discussion.
I've put it down.
Right, because that, but I would like us to check the record. I thought there was something when I was sitting over there that did get assigned to student achievement that had something to do regarding SROs. So just if we can check the record, I think two meetings ago. But if that's even the case, we've had health and safety meet. If there's something that SAC is supposed to be doing, they're meeting next week. And then you will have had both of those committees meet prior to the May 10th meeting, which I think makes sense. My, my, it's along that same line, my assignment, and I hope this is not too tedious, but one part of the discussion that I'm resisting a lot and almost resenting is that when the material is being presented, they are presenting it as though we do not have any restorative justice, that we do not have any social workers, or that we don't have psychologists, and we don't have counselors, and we don't have mental health services in every single one of our buildings. And I would like the administration to make a chart by school because we are allowing an incorrect perception to be out there in the public that our children are not being served, or that we have not created an infrastructure of service. So I, I'm totally interested in trying to talk about the cops in schools and whatever. And I think it's totally warranted and some of this is very disturbing. But please, let's get the message out of what we do provide.
Yes. Thank you. And, and I think that sums it up because I, you know, I understand the urgency of this issue. And I, and we do respect what the students are saying, but it kind of feels like sometimes we're, the pressure of them coming on every single meeting and we did decide to do some work on it. We just have to centralize that work and come up with some action steps or recommendations. And so I think it's a legitimate subject matter for us to discuss as long as we have the data and we can look at the chart and we can tell the story of what's actually happening. So I think we're on our way to that. Thank you. Any other assignments? Any other assignments? Having no further agenda, no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned.